All right. Thanks very much. Good afternoon and welcome to school committee's regular meeting of August 21st, 2025. I will call this meeting to order at 4:06 PM. We'll first go through our agenda, which includes public comment, Chair and Superintendent remarks, Consent agenda for 25-26 school committee meeting dates and consideration of school committee representatives to the facilities master plan working group, Reports and action items, including consideration of the WHS cellphone expectations for 2025-26, Carriage House Liaison update, School Committee articles for Fall Town Meeting warrant, Consideration of the splash pad at the Mystic Building, Consideration of first readings, a first reading of facility rental policies manual, Consideration of a backpack donation by the Members Plus Credit Union. We'll move that back under the consent agenda later. Next meetings will be the, will be, of next meetings, executive session and adjournment. So with that, is anybody here this evening, afternoon, still afternoon? For some, for a couple of public comment? None?
Okay.
We will close public comments. Thank you very much. And we'll move right on to Chair and Superintendent remarks. I suppose I have this listed as Swin Winchester. As a start, so I'll just give a quick update on that. Dr. Hackett and I had met with the Swin Winchester, some of the Swin Winchester leadership and also Select Board Chair Michelle Prior a little while ago. We had just received an update from Swin Winchester on where they are with their, with their proposal. They're still interested in using the, using some space on Skilling's Field for their site. This would be along the, let me just see, and they've completed the design proposal that they showed us. So according to this, the building is located along the railroad tracks on Skilling's Field back where the soccer, the smaller soccer fields are right now, with parking along the backside of turf field. They, but this part of the field or Skilling's Field is designated as a park space. Things are popping up here on my, uh-huh. Is designated as a park space by the state. So they need to seek legislative approval for, from Boston. Yes, for, yes, to proceed. So they are considering their next steps and they were seeking some guidance on what their next steps should be. So I believe they are looking to go to town meeting to see what town meeting thinks of their proposal and how they should proceed.
I have a question and I'm not saying-
I try to answer or not.
Or not the location, but regardless, if a pool by Swin Winchester is built, who's going to manage the facility? If it's on, especially if it's on Skilling's Field?
Yes, these are questions that came up. So, these are questions.
It was originally designed as a public-private partnership. And they were going to solicit membership fees to support and the facility's maintenance and upkeep.
So it'd be like a board situation with a few public officials appointed to it?
That, that was what their initial, that was their initial planning for it was when we approved it, when we approved them moving forward the first time.
And they still spoke about public-private partnership?
Since it would be on public land.
Right.
And there would be like concessions, like initially as back when we first talked about it, that, you know, the high school swim team would have priority use of it so that our kids would be in the pool in town and things like that.
And because of its proximity to the high school, we'd want a good relationship with it.
Right, and, yes. And they had some landmarks that the school committee and select board set that they were supposed to meet before they came back for their next set of approvals originally.
Is anyone on this committee sitting on Swin Winchester?
No, no.
I do not volunteer.
I saw this coming. I'm not sure it's, having like a board to sit on yet.
Okay.
Correct, they're just, they have the fundraising.
Fair. They're sitting there in the fundraising.
It's a fair assessment.
Yeah.
I mean.
Are these just updates now or is this?
Yeah.
Discussion matters. Okay.
Update.
We could be here for a while.
Yeah, no, I think we can.
Going to manage it and talk to school department. I'm good.
Well, and Dr. Hackett maybe and Karen and Tim could share the original document agreement that we had with Swin Winchester with the whole committee because it might help each or some.
Correct.
You have to.
That would be helpful. Thank you.
It goes back quite a ways.
Yeah.
And things have changed slightly in the.
They've changed.
All right, take care of that. Dr. Hackett is going to provide building project update.
I actually, I'm going to turn that over to Andrew, but I'm gonna just skip. I just wanted, there's something that's not listed on here, but I did want to mention the policy subcommittee met this week, last week.
This week.
Yesterday. It was yesterday. The policies, okay, all right.
It was a year ago.
In one of the items that, that I had brought forward to them was a, there's a, there's a state bill that says bus school safety law, which has passed. And the, the intent is to provide, to actually mount video systems on school buses that will actually record if there's a violation of, of driver going past while the flashers are on.
Oh, so the timer's going outward?
Yes, yep.
Both like around.
Right.
Yes.
It's like a Waymo.
Right.
Except it's not going to drive.
Kind of like, but different. It's kind of like the owl when you bus mounted.
Which, which I mean, conceptually, I, I think is a great idea. I have, over the course of my career, I have had some bad situations with drivers going by buses where the flashers are on. And there's been, obviously there's been incidents, so it does make, it does make a lot of sense. It was, the bill itself is, there is no funding for it, which is not surprising. So however, I think that, and I'm not asking you to do anything today, but I just want to let you know and I'll share the bill with you. That, that is, we had brought that information to the policy subcommittee and probably will be coming back to you with some kind of, well, just at least an overview and a little, some kind of a recommendation as to what we might want to do for your consideration. So.
Funny, they're putting in a Waymo, but no seatbelts. Sorry.
It's, it's that same, it's that same.
Like the Jaguar Waymos, which are very different.
And that's, also just want to mention, we had a new teacher orientation yesterday, right? Got that one right, didn't I?
Two days.
Two days.
Oh my God.
Felt like yesterday to me too. I know it.
Right in this room. And we had about thirty people. I'd say thirty new employees, not just all.
Oh, not all.
Yep, yep. Obviously not new, new. It's a new position. People retire or have left, but also included ESPs, administrators as well. Really good group and Lori and Jen did a great job running, running the show. It's a packed day for them. So it was really nice just to see teachers here. It's kind of like the official kickoff. It's, you know, one of those benchmarks and we know the school year is getting closer. So it was very, it was very well done. So I think it was appreciated by the new teachers, although I did just do want to mention that it's like about a hundred-page PowerPoint that equivalent to of the mandated trainings that we have to run them through, which I think we've got it down, but it's a little bit, it's a lot. So, or asked to do more with our teachers, we're going to need more time, you know, so, but, so it was a good group and we actually will have on Tuesday next week, we have our leadership workshop. Thank you. Which is all of our directors, content coordinators, all of our building administrators, including principals will meet for the day and we are going to be going through some strategic planning work. So we're getting closer. Now, I'm just saying. Andrew, I'm going to do that. Yep. Building projects.
Building projects. Imagine photos. This is our facility-wise. I go around photos, the top left two are from Morocco. And so recall, we had grade one, two rooms. We gave them new rugs. The whole building got new paints, all the walls. The remaining classrooms, so some K rooms and then three through five, we abated the previous rugs and had a new VLT. Final luxury aisle.
Solid surface floor.
Solid surface, yeah. They just look great. Some teachers have been moving in the past two weeks and they're so appreciative of the change. It just, it just feels different. Yeah, they appreciate it. The second picture is an update from the new cafeteria. So we, in the middle of the building was the previous library and we converted that into a cafeteria this year. And so part of that, there's a lot of requirements to add hand sinks and three bay sinks. So that's what you're seeing there. Plumbing work finished Monday. Electrical finishes this coming Monday. Painting in there is complete and electrical, yeah. And then we took a lot of the lightly used furniture from Parkhurst. So they have new, newish round tables and a newish serving line that's dedicated to that space. We don't longer have to use the, the kind of closet in the gym and one small serving line and quickly turn over that space for gym. So now the gym can function normally.
That's good.
And Leslie and team there, principal have reworked some of the sections for lunch. So they have kind of smaller and more sections. And I think Lincoln piloted it, started last year. And Elder Principal there found a lot of success in kind of smaller groups and they get more time on the plate, equipment and I think just managing everyone works out better.
And Ms. Kirby, tell us how exciting that is as a former Morocco.
It's so exciting.
And Notcham, so we moved the library to, to consolidated classroom spaces. Those previously were in seventeen and eighteen. Announced one big library space. So all the books are going back this week. And also looks as brand new VLT and painting and it's a really nice space. Some things do remain, so it'll be prickling into the fall. We'll be the sinks. I work with a group who's, we just confirmed the design and they're doing one mock-up that we're going to take and make sure it fits in each room. But we order all those. They've done some like chrome, when they're already plumbing work and cap areas and prep that for the install. And then we'll be doing more blown-in insulation under those overheading classrooms to further kind of help with heating in the winter and maybe some test mitigation as well. And then we had some HVAC products too that were cordoned out of the library. And keep the books, you know, controlled and have a nice school space as well. And then last on the playground, we are friends at Windpack and the board select, this select board, we had offer funding for more inclusive play equipment. So that's been installed at Morocco. Actually, each elementary school got a piece of something from that. So they have a little spinner there and some wobble pads, looks like surfboards. And brand new mulch. So it's all happening. It's good. And then McCollum, you can see the roof work in front of the building. That's also going to trickle into September on the back of the building in the, the side parking lot. Casey McCollum to the left, there'll be some staging there. Like half of that will be available maybe through September, but no other impact on the site. Picture of New Lynch. So a reminder that we have the ribbon cutting on Monday.
Is that an actual picture?
That's the actual picture.
Just, yeah.
Yeah. I was standing there.
It looks so good. It looks so good. It looks fake.
Yeah.
Right. Looks like AI.
Yeah.
It looks AI, doesn't it?
But yeah, you can see why the vinyl graphics are up and it's really coming together. Teachers also so appreciative coming in. Yeah, some are like, just like tears of joy looking in there and seeing it. So they're super happy. A picture of Lincoln. So Lincoln and VO got some more major upgrades. So Lincoln got a whole new playground. And on the fields, they also have a swing set, also like an inclusive, accessible swing. And then VO got all new surfacing on the pre-K, K playground and then the upper playground.
Still underway.
Yeah.
Yeah, still finishing, I think, the main playground here.
For those who drive by the school.
Yeah.
Although it seemed like they had made a lot of progress in the last day or so. Because it went from black to, has like a blue.
A busy summer for you.
Yeah, well, yeah.
This is an amazing amount of-
And I can't forget the high schools. So they also have, your gymnasium is underway. Planning for mid-October to open that. Then that's what do, maybe another ribbon cutting or something. And then my favorite, there's source supply corrosion inhibitor project.
The most.
It's the fanciest.
Yeah.
It's the best picture.
I can't believe you didn't put a picture up of that.
Yeah. I have something to do.
This is the carving machine?
It does, yeah.
And would I be-
Bottom side work and then the top side in the next years.
Would I be able to bother you for a tour of Morocco with the, to look at all the new improvements? I know, and if I can bring some community leaders from Morocco with me?
Yeah, if anyone likes to go, walk through next week or so.
That would be great. We could, I think we should really celebrate the, the work that's been going into that building.
Yeah. Yeah, I love it. It looks great.
I've been sending out photos while you were away.
Awesome.
Folks are aware of.
Excellent.
So it's, I think there's a level of excitement.
Good, yeah.
Because it definitely, I mean, I, I don't think that it's just good photography. I think it genuinely looks a lot better than it did. So.
Yeah, it just feels better there.
Yes.
Yeah, Monday will be busy there. These movers coming.
Well, Monday is the ribbon cutting, right?
Yes, yeah. And then we have the kind of lightly used furniture from Parkhurst and Lynch is all going to Morocco as well. So teachers or staff went over and kind of labeled what they wanted and they wanted everything. So.
It's such a game changer to have an actual cafeteria at Morocco that I just, it looks lovely, but it's also like just when you think about scheduling structurally for kids and teachers and staff there. So just really appreciate the outside-the-box thinking on that and finding a way to make the school really more livable and enjoyable and like changing the carpet, changing the tile. They, they're not, they don't seem glamorous, but they really are to the people living and using the building every day. So really appreciate the persistence on this and getting that done and especially adding on the cafeteria. No more cafagematoria. If I never have to say that again, I'll be a happy school.
Yeah, we're officially done with this.
Yeah, kudos for being able to get it done because I.
There were questions.
There were, yes. That's a nice thing. There, there were lots of questions about, could we, are we, are we going to be able to get it done in the summer? And I think that's what you're showing us is just really amazing work.
Andrew gets the time.
Testament to that.
Yeah, well, yeah. Shout out to my friend Pete Lawson there too. It was, you know, we had wrong flooring arrive, delays, vendors, procurement things, but all sort of came together at the end. So.
Great, everyone's flexibility.
Amazing.
Excellent.
We do have some, if anyone's interested, we do have some Montever six in Morocco parking lot, if anyone wants to.
Montever what?
Montever six.
Oh, sink, yeah.
Wow, loves sinks. Previously loves sinks.
When you first look at them, it's, you know, you might not.
Yeah.
Previously.
Previously used, like slightly used.
Like on.
See, they went so fast.
Those are the ones with the rust.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have basement project.
That you wouldn't want. Trust me, you wouldn't want this.
Yeah.
I can show you some of those.
I have a question. There's the, yeah, the database.
Good question.
Um, could you take, could you, I'm sorry, we don't.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I know, it feels so.
Yeah.
Yes, feel free to send a question over.
Yeah. Thank you so much. Last item under remarks is we do have the MASC, MAS, some school committee conference coming up. That will be November 12th to, to the 14th. We do usually send a couple of school committee members. It does usually fall like right during town meeting. And town meeting this year is six, ten, thirteen. Yeah. So we usually go to like a day and a half of that or so. And it's good to get some of the, to be able to go to some of the seminars and meet some of the other people. And this year, I think the new commissioner of DSE is going to be there, Pedro Martinez, during one of the talks. So it's a great opportunity. But early registration with a discounted rate is by September 5th. So if you could let Kristen, no, or Kristen or Stephanie.
Kristen.
Kristen. They can take care of registration. And with.
Do we, I don't know, because I haven't, the timing has never worked for me, but um, do we designate someone to be our moving member down there? Is that something that we'll need to do at some point?
So we've never stayed long enough to be, for the voting because it's a through town meeting.
The only time that we were ever able to do it was when it was removed.
So usually just they put it down there overnight?
Usually do Wednesday overnight and then half day Thursday when we've done it before. So we're back in time for town meeting. But you could also do.
Yeah.
But usually like the first night's the dinner with the commissioner.
With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. So we have here the 25-26 school committee meeting dates as in your packet. And for consideration of the school committee representatives to the facilities master plan working group, Ms. Bergstrom and Mr. Matt, Dr. Matthews have very graciously volunteered to serve as our representatives to this. So we will ask for a vote for that. And then we also have consideration of a backpack donation by the Members Plus Credit Union. And they have given us a donation of backpacks for a number of years now and have done it again, done so again this year.
So if you're willing to accept a motion, I guess I'll have to make a two-part motion because I think initially the report, the consideration of the backpack donation was under section five reports. So I would first move that committee agrees to consider the backpack donation by Members Plus Credit Union as part of the consent agenda.
So moved. All in favor?
I, we're not remote, so we don't have to do it. Okay. Great. So I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda, the three items as presented for today, including school committee meeting dates, the representatives officially appointed to the facilities master plan working group and the backpack donation by Members Plus Credit Union.
I just had a quick question about the meeting dates, the November ones that we just talked about.
Yes.
Overlap with town meetings, is that intentional?
Just the thirteen.
Just the thirteen.
It's just the thirteen. Hopefully just the thirteen.
We can revisit that if we, we discussed.
I didn't know if that was intentional or if that was.
So far intentional.
Okay.
And, and I'm so far, I'm supportive of it, but I have a conflict on the September 25th date. You can function without me, but just want to acknowledge before I vote for it and people say later, why didn't you tell us?
Yeah.
We can also consider if we need to change it.
Yeah, otherwise I'll second the motion.
Thanks.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. And the vote is unanimous for our consent agenda. And I've heard that there are several responses for the RFP.
Yes, no, it's speak of it tonight, but yes, we have, we, there are, there are several vendors who have submitted RFPs or for consideration for the master facilities plan. So we just see those and.
So there's lots of work.
Yes, yeah.
For our new background.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, first up on our reports and the reports is consideration of the WHS cellphone expectations for 25-26. And we, school committee had discussed the, or had discussed the cellphone recommendations from the cellphone expectations working group back in July, I believe it was. The cellphone bill has subsequently passed in the Senate. And now it is going to the House. Still, the timeline is TBD for when it will actually be in the House. And then the timing for implementation, whatever comes out, would be for 2026, 2027. So Dr. Hackett is bringing us some information and a recommendation, I believe.
Yes. And I, Ms. Mahoney's here. I can't see who's behind me. I don't think this is from the high school.
Do we need him to come up?
I don't, you're welcome to come on the field if you'd like. I'm just going to, so you saw this, this was from the, from the meeting where the cellphone recommendation, expectations were presented to you as the school committee. Ms. Mahoney went through those and this is where you, I just, this is really just the recommendation slide. If you recall, I believe it was on the day that this was presented to you, the Senate bill came out. I think it was the day of this.
Of course it was.
Yes. So we, so since your meeting and part of the conversation that you had was, you know, let's see where, where it goes and is there going to be more information forthcoming? It does not appear that there will be anything that would be available to us before the start of the school year. So I think we know as much right now as we are going to know in terms of what the state is going to do. And I think how we are thinking about it now more so is whatever the state does, more importantly, what are we going to do? Right? So, because who knows where this will go? I would just say that there's some of the, some of the recommendations here, we're, we're going to give you a slightly different, more up-to-date recommendation around them. So for, I'll just start with number, on the second bullet, all phones will be held in a locked storage area in a learning space that is also portable during emergency situations. Ms. Mahoney and I don't know who else actually tested some of the lockers and they really are not of the quality that we would really want to invest the kind of money that they're talking about. So what we are, what we, what we're planning to do is to just go with the shoe trees for next year. They're inexpensive. We have success with some teachers who are already using them. So it's a known solution. They will be in, we'll, we'll purchase enough to make sure that we get them on all the classrooms so that they will be available. And that will be the expectation is that students will be putting their cellphones consistent with the rest of this recommendation, but they will be putting their cellphones class to class into, into the, is it a shoe tree? Is that what it is? This seems a weird thing to call it. Right? So that, that is a change from what you have presented here from the last meeting. The rest of it, for the most part, is still consistent with how we are thinking about starting the 25-26 school year. Going back to the earlier comment, actually Andrew, if you could just pull up the, the Google Doc, the cellphone, yeah. So this is just a, a summary of the bill. And it is in your, is in your packet. There, there's a lot, there's a lot of exceptions here. And we're really not sure exactly how this is going to play out. So our intent going into 25-26 is that we are essentially, we are seeing this as kind of the first phase. And we're seeing it as that we will, that things can, we may change over the course of this school year. So there's a lot for us to kind of, we want to see how, what it looks like in action. You know, we are, we are also sensitive to the fact that we're talking about high school students who, who we have always given a lot of, we've always what, had them involved. They're very much involved in the high school and decision-making around certain things with the high school. We have a lot of respect for their opinions. There, probably many of them are, you know, on summer vacation and aren't paying attention to the cellphone issue, question. So we, you know, we are looking to also partner with them as we, as we go into the, to the school year to get their feedback. And also to kind of live this for, for the first few months. And also to kind of live this for, for the first few months. But we want to be clear, it's the electronic, it's electronic device policy, which kind of opens up some other questions about how we manage certain things within the curriculum. But we, we can take that up, uh, we can take that up later. So you can see the policy requirements. If you go up just a little bit more, Andrew comes the other way, no, otherwise, yes. Prohibition on student physical access to devices during the school day stands for device use beyond the school day, which I'm not entirely sure what that means. Um, and that's not clear yet. D E S I is going to be providing some recommendations for implementation, which we, we won't see those for until after the bill is actually taken up in the fall. It's this list of exceptions that we are really, um, I won't say concerned about, but it's going to present some challenges and I think there are going to be some things that we're not going to expect. I think there could be some unintended consequences. And I think it's really important for us to live this with students, um, and with staff, with teachers for, um, a couple of months so that we can better understand what this all means and how it starts to play out. Methods of parent, for parents and guides to contact students and for students to contact parent, parents and caregivers. As proposed right now, it's not, it's not the issue that it would be if we were, if we were putting, having students put their cell phones or their devices into a locked storage facility and would not have access to them because we're talking, we're basically talking about a class to class.
Right. And this is for bell to bell.
This is for bell to bell.
Right.
But I would challenge anyone to read this and think that it really is truly bell to bell. I understand.
I agree. So many times, right?
Yes, right, so.
It's lost that spirit.
It has lost that spirit. It's lost that loving feeling.
Still has the name.
It, but yet it still has the name, which I think is a nice brand thing so that everyone can think that something really got done. But, you know, clearly we do have the real situation of health and safety, I guess, you know, less so around, but with I E Ps, A B A accommodations, multi-language learners. There's a, there are a lot of potential exceptions. And what's the process for the exceptions? How does that go through? Does it have to be formally through a five oh four plan? Or certainly I E Ps are in existence, so we know what that looks like. Until we have some alternative, um, solutions for, um, some of the, like, for example, anything related to curriculum that we, the teachers are currently have established lessons that they have been using for a couple of years and they have built in device use. And up to this point, um, it has been students can use their own devices. So we have done an initial, like, about how much would we be, how would we, what equipment would we need to make sure that we're not compromising our curriculum and continue to maintain the ability to deliver those units and that instruction? But it was, you know, it has been the summer and we need to spend more time with faculty to really get a better handle on, you know, what are, what are the real needs? And, and there would be potentially a monetary, um, um, move that would be some cost for us that we'd have to bring back to the committee and figure out how to manage it. If we're, if we, as we move toward, if the, and our ten is to hit the spirit of the law for twenty six, twenty seven and be bell to bell.
Or just do what's right.
We just do what's right, um, according to some people. No, and I, you know, we, we certainly see the value of it, um, in a lot of ways. And I, as we have said, we want to, when we do something, we want to do what we say we're going to do. And, um, the high school is just a different, um, animal, so to speak, because of just the, uh, the student population and, um, kind of how we currently operate. High school, uh, as you also know, Mr. Mahoney talked about, we have students who can go off campus during day for lunch. We have open ends, meaning that, um, then students have some flexibilities to when they come in, depending on what they have in their schedule. It's not all students, not all grade levels, but those opportunities currently exist. I, you know, how do we do that, uh, and still maintain that? Which I think it has really is an important part of our culture here. That, how do we do that with, with bell to bell? So, you know, there's nothing that we don't, that I don't think is insurmountable. But what we don't know is, what we really don't know is what is it going to look like? And, and, um, what are the challenges going to be? So the feeling is, if we start here, we've started somewhere, right? It's not even really, uh, we don't have to have anything in place until twenty six, twenty seven, but this gives us an opportunity this year to begin that process. We think that there, there are natural points within the school year that if we wanted to, um, implement a change based on our lived experience with this for next year, um, working toward bell to bell, that we have the ability, we have the ability to do that. You know, this, the school of thought is classroom management, right? You start, start really tight with the management and then you loosen up because if you, if you too loose, when kids first get there, it's hard to tighten it back up again. I, I appreciate that, but I don't think, I don't think it's really the same situation. Uh, I think that, um, what's going to be most important is for us to really understand involving students, understanding what it looks like. Um, and then if we're, as we move forward, how, how are we going to address, uh, certain aspects of what the spirit of the, of the statute would be? So I won't go on anymore, but that's essentially, um, how we're thinking about it. So really the modification, the other modification for us right now would be that teachers and that is provided in, see them on the bullets here, that teachers do have the ability to, um, have students use their cell phones in classrooms. So because we have that currently and because we don't have an alternative solution for what's, we're delivering for instruction until, uh, we figure out how to do that and are we going to purchase devices to make sure we can maintain what we do? We would also allow for that, but we also, um, the thinking right now is that we would have some kind of process in place. So it's very specific. So it's not, a teacher can decide on the day or, you know, or that they're going to have students use their device. But if it's attached to instruction, uh, that there'd be a conversation, I don't think I'd go this way so far as to say the approval process, but, uh, we'll meet with the directors and talk with the directors about how, one of the ways in which we could just try to make sure that we're, um, monitoring it, but more importantly, I think for teachers, that they know that there's consistency. Because I think some of the concern that Mr. Mahoney expressed is just, you know, I think teachers, whatever we do, I think teachers are looking for the consistency. So it's, it's, you know, they know that everyone, there's certain things that every teacher is going to, is going to do. Um, and what those, what that process is. So, um, that's, yeah, that's where we are with it. Um, and we really do need to make a decision, um, and get the information out. The handbooks are ready to go. But, yeah, answer any questions or doubts? I don't know if there's anything you want to add, or?
Can I just ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
Your recommendation then is to adopt the proposal that Mr. Mahoney presented for a class to class ban on devices with the two changes. It'll be in a shoe tree instead of a lockbox and, um, teachers have a process that they can go through if they want to use them for educational purposes. But that's the recommendation.
Correct.
Got it. Good. I just want to understand what.
What, what do you say? Since we can have discussion after a motion is made, it may actually help to make a motion to support that recommendation, since you just so clearly laid it out. I, I, I would maybe, because we can discuss after the motion is made and seconded. So maybe I would move that we accept the recommendation made by Dr. Hackett as just laid out by Mr. Hubcraft.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
All right, so now discussion. I just wanted to catch it because it's so hard to restate it.
It, it took a journey to get there a little bit and, uh, which is an important journey with a lot of context, but I'd like to make sure I followed it.
It was very clear, and so I just want to seize that opportunity to move things along to discussion.
But now we can discuss.
Yes.
Did I just, no, I, Mr. Hubcraft summary.
Thank you.
Well, he's been on vacation, so he's pretty warm wrestling.
He's a little chat G P T over there. Well, um, sorry, thank you. Um, I'm happy to hear that this is part of what you're envisioning to be a multi-phase approach, right? Going towards the eventual goal of bell to bell, given whatever Boston is talking about, right? And using this as an opportunity to, you know, have any lessons learned, right? And figuring it out. So when we get to that point, we have a process in place. So starting September fourth, every teacher is going to have a shoe tree.
We believe that we can do that. I'm pretty sure we can.
They start, based on.
Some departments are, don't want to use our lockers, that would cost us.
We don't, we don't have enough lockers for.
We don't have enough lockers, right? But there are, well, eleven hundred, fourteen hundred students, we need to get like three hundred lockers for.
Four hundred and eighteen plus lockers.
Four hundred and eighteen plus lockers.
There are not a lot of locations for those lockers.
I see, but like getting a cell hotel for four hundred.
Do that.
Is a possibility.
But that, that would be inconsistent with the classroom model, I think, that they're talking about, right?
I think she's thinking beyond. You can still go to your locker, still go to your locker, right, in between classes. You can't though in this building.
If you, so with three hundred thousand, so you can, but you'll probably be late to class.
Right.
With three hundred thousand square feet of, of surface area, if you're coming from the boys or girls locker room, all the way on E wing, you've got to go to third floor, A wing.
So the building was designed to not use lockers.
I think the building, like, I think the lockers are an add-on. And then, you know, the space in the hallways with everybody coming and going, it's not impossible.
Right.
But I think a, a nice field trip, because I've done it, would be to leave from the lockers with nobody in the building and, and go at normal adult pace, not student pace, adult pace, which is a little bit quicker, and see how long it takes you to get from there to the farthest, the farthest corner. You'd be surprised and, uh, because I've done it. And I thought I was walking at a pretty decent clip. And, uh, it definitely was close to that five minute mark, if not over. And that was, that was eight or nine years ago.
Okay, um, so then in my shoe tree, I'm plopping my phone down. What about my AirPods? What about my watches?
We're going to start with cell phones.
Okay, we're not going to include AirPods though, I can just like boop and put it in the tree.
We're going to, wow, I mean, we're going to start with, with, with cell phones. I think there's, there's some logic questions about the enforceability and, uh, what happens when we have, if, it's easy to, watches are just a little bit more personal because they're on the person. We will be clear that that's the expectation that they don't, that they're not used. But I think we need to live it too, to see, um, what that looks like and, um, how students respond and react to that. Because I do think we have to have a conversation about, you know, if we're going to do it, we want to do it right, we want to do it well. So if we have students who are in violation of that, how, how far, we're certainly not going to do, there's no expectation we're going to do searches of students, right? So, um, it's, there's somewhat of a, of a, um, honor code, good faith.
Right, so if I walk in with an AirPod in my ears, will the teacher say, get that out?
They see it, they, the teachers always have the right to enforce, like, the, there's the base rule, there's the base rule, and then there was the, you know, if the teacher wants to be stricter, we, we support that as well.
But the base rule wouldn't.
The base rule would not identify all the electronic devices that you have access to.
So I can walk in with my AirPods on, my watch on, and I'm going to plop my cellphone into a.
You're going to be a problem.
If I'm thinking it.
If they, if you're thinking it, they've already thought it and that they already have cloned their phones to their laptops. I don't want to, you can delete that if you're on it.
I mean, that's, that also brings up another issue, like bringing up, bringing your own personal devices to school, like your own laptop. I mean, at work, do you guys have to bring your own laptops into work? Is that your own device? No, the, the Manchester Public Schools issues you a laptop, like most workplaces, right? If you work at a bank, you work at a financial firm, or you work at a law firm, they give you a laptop when you go to work for many people.
Which is going to be part of the conversation we're moving forward, right? So that there is a price tag to that, that will have to affect.
Well, parents can still pay for it. Right, just what they do now.
Yep.
And we can, if anything, we can negotiate above volume, uh, no.
I'm sure we can, yep.
So they'll be even cheaper.
Yep. We're not prepared to do that for this year.
Absolutely, but it's on the radar and it's part of the.
Well, and I think the most important thing is we need to have a program for families. So we'd have to put in place, because I've thought about this a lot. And I think the biggest challenge with that is that we would then also have to have both a structure as well as a funding mechanism for families who aren't able to afford that purchase.
Yeah, and we, that, that is in place right now, because you have to bring your own device.
Correct, no, but there are loner laptops available. I mean, so I asked this question, you know, at the previous meeting and we, I think what Mr. Mahoney said was that we have students who are currently using, in some cases, their phones as their device.
They have been.
In a limited number of situations at least.
And I mean, I think a lot of kids use their phone as a calculator in math class and things like that, but there's ways, there's certain ways to solve that.
But not every, at this moment in time, not every kid has a bring your own device laptop every day.
Correct. With that, that's where the loner program comes in through the library.
Yeah.
So that, I'm glad you brought that up because when we use cell phones as part of curriculum, there are significant equity issues there, right? Because if I have a thousand dollar device versus a two hundred dollar device, I'm able to produce superior content with my thousand dollar device that has a better A I integrated system, better camera, better microphone. And that, so therefore whatever I'm going to produce as part of curriculum will be different, just strictly based on whatever equipment I'm using. So that's what creates a lot of concerns for using cell phones as part of curriculum. Like if a teacher wants you to, you know, create a podcast, right? If I have a fifteen hundred dollar device, um, I'll, I have the capability to produce something better for no other reason, but I just spent more money on this, right?
I guess so.
Oh, no, I mean, well.
I mean, if we're grading for, you know, H D quality or, you know, depending.
Well, whatever.
And I'm pretty sure that if students don't have a device that they can use, then if that's the case that we're using it instructually, then we provide that. So, um, I think the other.
But I do think that students, it's a bit differing kinds of projects and stuff. Some of them might look really nice and very, very professional level quality. Others might be like my kids, but were like sprawled in pencil, like little pencil drawings and they weren't straight columns or anything.
I think that's kind of overlapping to, so, I mean, if we, if we're going to go down that path, then it depends on if you have a color printer at home. It depends on if you have access to purchasing additional materials and supplies. I mean, you could say that about almost any aspect of our curriculum. But for an in-class experience, that shouldn't be a boundary. It shouldn't, and I don't think it is now.
I'm not worried of being any boundary or a kid graded, a student graded lower because of their.
I mean, there's only so many. No, but you're able to produce, for, for example, I know if you're using it to create a podcast, right? Like an A I integrated tool, right? You can create a different experience. Probably not, because the tools that you're talking about aren't approved by the district to be able to use. So there's only certain tools that are approved by the school district to be able to use, and it's going to be a tool that's accessible to all the kids. So if I'm bringing my personal device, you can't see what I'm using.
So if we can back up for one second, because I appreciate the point. The intent is to, this is a phase moving towards learning, trying to figure out how we would go to bell to bell. Going bell to bell will have to, by definition, include us providing devices for students, whether it is devices on carts for those classes where they can share, or whether we go and say, every kid gets device through a loan program, they buy it, however, right? Whatever we do. So I, I think that's the point from my, from my perspective. I would, we thought about it from, you know, that inequity. One of the things that we're also trying to, we'll, we'll need to figure out too and think about is that, um, because all, most all students have a cellphone. Students who are using the cellphone for accommodation or use it for, you know, because of, of language, uh, support, um, they kind of all blend in. So what does it look like and what's the device? So whatever we do, we just need to make sure that we are obviously able to provide those accommodations. And we can, it's, like I said, there's nothing that's insurmountable that we could figure it out. But, and that's where we're going, but, um, that'll be over the course of this year. And, uh, could, you know, like, there'd be some budget issues around it too, that we'll have to, you know, put into the budget as we go through the process. So the timing is good for us to do this and learn, and then it should time up well. I think by the time we hit December, January, we'll have a, you know, have a good idea and be able to give me a decent recommendation around what, what, what do we feel that we need to do?
I think we're going to have to be clear what's allowed and what's not allowed. What's, but as we go through this process, like I, I heard Stephanie say, AirPods. I have personally two kids who use AirPods as an accommodation that's not written as an accommodation. So I think we're going to have to be clear with students and families, uh, what is going to be allowed in school and what isn't? Because we may see a dramatic increase in people requesting five oh four accommodations for electronic devices that we don't currently.
So I anticipate that that's what we will see.
Right, so I think this is a good, this is a good.
The noise, the noise thing is a, is a feature that a lot of kids like.
Correct.
In, at all capacities, because, in all areas, just because these kids are talking plenty and working together plenty.
But part of the process for this year is, we have the ability to actually collect data, right? We'll be able to really figure out how much of an, is, is that even an issue, right? How much of an issue is it? And then, you know, are we solving an issue that's for fifty percent of our population? Are we solving an issue for that, you know, for some smaller amount, right? And then what does that mean? How does it work? So.
We also need to know how to communicate around this.
Uh, uh, absolutely, absolutely. Only to know what we're talking about, the scope.
Right, but I think, so I think the biggest part of the communication is involving kids and parents and staff in the process of kind of figuring this out, because by, because we're doing that, they will have a say, right? That we will be getting feedback from them, and they'll know that we're in this process of doing something. Um, and yeah, but we land on, on figuring out exactly what we're going to do and really structuring to make sure that we're clear on the communication.
Because I'm thinking a lot about, sorry, I just, I want to make the point, I'm thinking a lot about the implementation of standard face grading, grade six, and sort of the communication gaps that we saw around that, and I don't want us to replicate, especially given that we're already late August, right? I don't wanna replicate that issue and say this is an evolving thing. And I mean, I'm sure that Mr. Mahoney and his team are gonna be well aware of the fact that there is gonna be a sort of phase-in transition period, so it's not every kid's gonna face consequences on day one if they haven't a hundred percent figured out how to comply with what they need under the new call. I mean, assuming there's gonna be like a grace period, and we communicate that to folks, that this is our aspiration, we're hoping to have it phased in, but the reality is we know there's gonna be a a moment at the beginning of the year, however long the time on that is, but there's gonna be a moment where we are figuring things out.
So, so I think it's, it, I, I think this is the right approach, because I don't think we can have a meaningful conversation without gathering the data first, uh, because it might be that people aren't using them at all, and the teachers maybe, that, you know, maybe, you know, the, the teacher who wrote in, you know, was very ambitious, and maybe no one actually uses them, it's not an issue, or maybe it is an issue, and, and maybe lots of students are using noise canceling, or maybe they're not. Um, I think it'd be interesting, maybe, um, for you, Mr. Mahoney, and your team, to, um, think about how you might gather that data, you know, uh, because there, there probably is an opportunity to even just informally after, you know, tell, tell our educators upfront, can you just kind of keep an eye on the classroom and let us know, like, do kids suddenly start all having it, AirPods? You know, yeah, it just like, like, it doesn't have to be.
Data, data is tough though, Mr. Hoprock, and it's like, the sense of, are we counting AirPods, or are we asking the feeling about AirPods? Because the feeling can always be exaggerated or underplayed, counting would be data.
Yeah, yeah.
And I don't think we have the capacity.
I would, I would leave that to you to, to think about, but, uh, but, but just, I, I think it'd be useful to have more insight into that.
So Tom, do you think that we should use this year as an opportunity to collect that data, in the sense that maybe, can I make an, a friendly amendment? Everly.
Absolutely.
Um, to your elegantly put motion to make it even more comput- well, make it confusing, because it was elegant before, now I'm gonna confuse it, um, to expand the language to include all personal devices, including AirPods and watches.
I did, it's hard, but.
But we're not afraid of heart pains. We're, we're into public schools.
I think this is a huge change. I, I, from my perspective, I think, you know.
The phones are a huge change?
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
And I think, I, and I think that we need to understand what, what are the implementation challenges about? And what do we want our administrators and our teachers to focus on? Because if we and we're gonna say that we're gonna do all devices right now, then we've gotta do it, right?
Right.
And I just don't think we're in a position where we're ready to do that. Um, and I don't think that it keeps us from doing it at some point later in the year, but our intent really is to deal specifically really with the cellphone, because that is the primary device that, um, that we're, that we're talking about.
I think if the AirPods and, uh, the watches are an issue, I think we're gonna hear from staff really quickly. I think that if, in your scenario, if kids start wearing AirPods when they put their cellphone in the um, dock where teachers haven't seen kids wearing headphones or cellphone, or AirPods before, if they're sitting in class texting, I think we're gonna hear really quickly as a committee that teachers want those things included, and that it's gonna be problematic for them to continue on too. Because these devices are connected to your phone, right? Some of them. It's an extension of your phone, some of them. But not everybody's watches. Not every, everyone's watch is an extension of their phone. Not everyone's. And the AirPods saying, you got a text message from mama, says. They.
I'm just not sure how much of an issue it is right now.
Right, that's what I'm, that's what I'm saying.
Dr. Hacken said that he would, that our administration and our teachers will work at collecting data and bring it in the, they will report back, or you will report back to us over the course of the year at certain touchpoints, um, so that the committee can talk about it and think, and.
I think we're flying somewhat blind right now on this, because we don't know what user experience, we don't know what students are doing, what they feel like they need to do, we don't know, we've not really uh, how many kids really are using watches? I mean, what is the extent of the problem we're trying to solve?
Well, the survey, um, specifically said phones. It didn't say personal devices, right, right? Um.
But we can be clear.
Cellphone, has the cellphone expectations committee expanded, or do you plan on?
That's a good question. I think it'd be nice if we tracked some information together, but in terms of implementation further, that should be an administrative desk.
Oh, absolutely, but to monitor progress, to continue to collect data, to expand the language of the survey, to include personal devices.
I'm having internal conversations with Dr. Hackit regarding wh- whether that should commit, committee should continue, or we should start a new committee.
Oh, okay.
That committee's done their work.
Right, right. Um, and if they are interested in continuing, they can, we apply for the.
If we start, start a new committee, or we keep it in-house and have an admin team work on it.
Okay, so we had a motion to amend. Do you have anybody um, with a second? I'm sorry, I think we discussed before we had a second.
Oh. That's what I think about that.
Uh, okay, with that, then we would stick with the original motion, which also had a second.
I would be happy to, because what, what I think we're trying to codify here, I, I personally am not ready to, based on what I'm hearing from the admin team, I'm not ready to charge forward with phone, um, watches, our AirPods right now. However, I think what I heard you saying, which I think would be really helpful, is to have the formal part of the policy that's around operation and data collection.
Okay.
With a revisit timeline, and maybe.
Wouldn't make that part of the policy.
So what, yeah, so I, our next steps are to figure out what kind of data we're gonna collect, right? And what does that process look like, and what's that timeline look like? Well, first of all, our next steps are to order these shoe trees that we can have by Saturday, that's the news, um, to start the year, to develop the craft of language that we're gonna communicate to parents and students as part of going into this year, um, to, to let them know what, what the intent is, and then to, for us to sit down, um, and we can come back to the committee and get feedback on that process, is certainly, um, n- not a problem at all to do that. I, our intent is to collect the data. What data do we need to collect? If, if we're gonna move to, in the states requiring twenty-six, twenty-seven, no devices, right? What data do we need to have? What do we need to know in order to be able to implement that, right? And then once we have that, those data, then what do we need to have in place structurally, right? Whether it's lock cellphone line, not a four hundred cellphone lockers, whether it's whatever it is, um, so that we can actually implement this, um, for twenty-six, twenty-seven. And I'm guessing there'll be no funding coming with any of this, which is kind of unfortunate, but not surprising. Um, you know, I also am somewhat concerned about just, as an example of, of a potential challenge, if we have students who have an accommodation that includes their AirPods, right? Or their watch, because they're doing whatever, I don't really know, um, then how, we don't put, we don't tag those kids, right? We don't know who they are, and so when they go class to class, then what, what would the process be, and how do we, how do we manage that? That, just as an example, because certainly at the high school level, and you know, those of you who have older students and older kids, I mean, the sense of fairness is hu- is huge, right? And why can someone get away with something that I can't get away with? So we have a lot of work to do with, um, just messaging and, and helping everybody understand what it is that's happening. I don't think it's, again, I think, I don't think it's insurmountable at all, but, but we really don't know the extent of, of, of the issue. We don't even know right now, sitting here right now, how many kids have an accommodation that involves anything to do with a cellphone or, or personal device. So that's probably, you know, that's one of the steps that we need to take. So the intent is to make informed decisions based on data, and actually, what's our lived experience right now, what problem are we trying to solve? Um, get students into and staff into helping us build the, the data around that and build, uh, a plan for, for moving forward.
I'd also like to understand, I know you touched on it, but the budget around this, because if we're talking replacing devices for, for equity for students and everybody having the same thing, um, not every high school now even chooses the same devices. Um, some districts are Apple districts, some districts are Chromebook districts, you know, there's all kinds of different iterations out there, some districts are iPad districts, so we would need to understand the budget implications of that and replacing that for fourteen hundred.
Well, I, I think what we'll be able to do is bring options, right?
Right, that's what I mean. And, um, and additionally, you know, what else do we need to replace? For teachers, even if we replace students these devices, what other devices are teachers gonna need to continue to do the work that they're doing with kids? Because, um, we did, we did sort of set the teachers up by having, you know, a, a tech campaign, uh, we worked with Wiffy to do, um, to get tech in all the rooms, and then to take it all back out and make it district-owned. There, there could be some complications with that, so I'd like to understand, um, understand what that looks like and what the budget implications are, because the reason we went the way we did before was we couldn't afford to provide.
Right.
One-to-one devices.
And the day, the devices would become an operational cost, because they'd be refreshed on a, on.
On a regular basis and maintain, then they have to be maintained by the district. So you need somebody in tech for the district that's responsible for collecting and maintaining the devices, what happens when they break, what happens when a screen breaks, all of this, our kids and families manage on their own. So, um, I'd like to understand more about that, and as well as, um, there's an equity issue by everybody not using the same technology. There's also an equity issue by having kids who need technology use it when there's no other technology in the building. So if we have kids who are using devices as communication devices, um, if we have them using AirPods for noise cancelling, then if nobody else is allowed to have them, then we're immediately going to identify what kids have accommodations and what kids don't physically, in a way that you can see. And I'm actually sort of curious about the, the legal implications of that, because there's, um, student privacy information. And if we have, if we're putting a tag on somebody that says I have anxiety and I have to wear noise-canceling headphones, then we're identifying kids in the building automatically.
Well, there's an efficacy piece too, because the kids just won't wear them.
Potentially.
Or they will, and we won't know who they are. I mean, teachers at the high school level, how, how many kids on there, in their, in their case load.
Approximately, I mean, on average, a hundred, but it goes right to one thirty-six, and you go down to about seventy.
So it's, it certainly would be an easier task if we're talking about an elementary classroom, where you've got twenty-two kids in there, there all day long. But we're talking about kids rotating through a schedule, rotating through the building, um, and, uh, we have to figure out how we manage that.
Some, some concerns, if I may, as a non-voting member of.
Yeah, we know you're not a voting member.
Not yet. Um, the off-campus, so we've, we have parts of our culture at Winchester High School that we absolutely love, and we don't want to change. The fact that they don't use their lockers is a mature activity, because they learn how to manage their books and texts. Instead of carrying their social studies book, their biology book, their English book, which can weigh about twenty-five to thirty pounds apiece in a backpack, they learn how to move their books around, keep them at home, bring them in, and that's, that's a piece of executive functioning that a lot of our kids are able to do, because they don't have to go to their lockers. On top of that, open campus for lunch is something that, like, I'm saying, that's a hill I'll die on, because that is a unique part of our culture. And our kids leaving campus without a cellphone to go to Chick-fil-A, to go to the Burlington Mall for press, and to get back in time in thirty minutes, which is what they do. I don't know how they do it, but they do it. I can't imagine sending my children off in a car with friends without a cellphone, as I'm saying, honestly, I know my wife's cellphone number. I don't know my kids' cellphone numbers, because it, it's just something I've never bothered to learn, because it's a data entry point in my phone, and they're not even really cellphone numbers anymore, they're just data points. It's a data, it's a data entry. So if we're sent, thinking about sending our kids off-campus from Starbucks to wherever, you know, no, no free ads, uh, over by the Burlington Mall, without a cellphone and a car full of kids, I, I think we should really pause and think about that.
Oh, I absolutely agree. And even the most strict bell-to-bell policy, once you leave campus, you can use your phone.
Well, there, yeah, except for the fact that there is a provision in here that talks about.
And this policy, and the state of Massachusetts policy that's currently being discussed, but in the state of New York and Los Angeles, um, if you leave campus, you can use your phone.
Yeah, and I would think that that would be the right thing.
I, a hundred percent support that. I would, I, I was coming from the primordial ooze of the cellphone movement when I was in high school, and my parents gave me a phone when I got a car, because it's safer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To, to address your concern, I think what I was trying to do with the sort of change is like, is there a touchpoint mid-year that we can sort of, you know, that we would revisit this?
I think we can just ask for a report.
Yeah, I think, I think, if you, if we can get this, this school year started, figure out how, what data we want to collect, and how we want to approach this, I think we can come back to you and say, uh, we're gonna give you, uh, uh, first quarter progress report of where we are, an update, just to let you know, here's, here's what we've collected, here's where we are, here's the information we're trying to get. Um, and then, you know, we would have to, really, I mean, by December, we would have to have a pretty good handle on exactly what be, the options for implementation in terms of budget. Um, so, you know, it's, it's a bit of a short window, but we, there's, there could be budgetary needs that we have to address.
So I guess what I'm trying to say is, is there like, putting a mid-year data presentation and checkpoint, does that make you feel more comfortable around, you know, these specific issues? Because that's what I'm trying to.
Oh, I, I'm all about collecting all the data, and I can't wait to see how, especially the students, because we know how parents feel about it, and we know how the staff generally feel about it. But I'd love to see how students feel about this.
Absolutely.
Yeah, um, and how, how it affects their workflow, how it affects their mental health, their productivity, absolutely.
Whether there's more than.
And if we can get students to come in and talk about it, that would be even more valuable.
Yeah, I think it's huge to get them out of the classroom, is what I think, the first. I mean, that's the huge distractability.
But I, I do, I, I do feel like the language should be expanded. Um, I do feel like all the accessories is just, we, sure, it's a long way, but.
It would have to be for twenty-six, twenty-seven, right?
Yeah.
No, but I'm saying, like, if it comes September, we have that capability, so just drop.
We don't, is what I'm saying.
Watches, they fit in the little shoe tree.
I, I, what I'm saying, I don't know, I don't know that we can, I think it's gonna be all we can do to, with some level of integrity, to implement cell phones, because it's visible, it's off your body. We have a slot for it. I think that's, from my perspective, that's the first step. I mean, that will be a big culture change for kids, certainly. I mean, the, they're gonna be, there's gonna be, we're also gonna learn about all the new devices you can get on Amazon, that you, you know, the invisible whatever, right? And kids are gonna be wearing glasses and stuff, so I think, I, you know, um.
I just don't think it's meaningful progress.
But I also think, listening to Ms. Burdstrom had to say on, um, being able, and what Dr. Hackett is talking about, about being able to identify different students. Um, I think these are things that we do have to consider and think about, um, so.
But why can you wear noise-canceling AirPods when you need to listen to a teacher? Believe it or not, kids with disabilities can. It, it's so, in some ways, it's the only way some kids with certain disabilities can actually function in a classroom with twenty-five to thirty kids.
And it might not be when the teacher's speaking, and you're, and they're just working quietly in the classroom. Like, especially a directed study, where there's no teacher, but you're, you're, they're supposed to be doing work, same thing with wind block. There's nobody speaking at you, unless, like, you're asking a question, but there could be conversations around you, because directed study, we allow talking, and same, same type of wind block, um.
But maybe those students should be provided spaces. And I think, I think that can be part of the conversation.
That's exactly.
We need to support these kids and not just rely on whatever personal device they're bringing in, right? We just need to, for children that have anxiety, for example, we can't just say, oh, your device will take care of it. We should have resources and.
We should have resources and processes that support them.
Except the beauty of technology for kids with special needs is that it is seamless and invisible.
I, I, yeah, I think, I think it's one, one of many tools that people may use when, when dealing with that. But I, I, I would differ um, on the point that I, I do think this is pretty meaningful um, progress. Because you were talking about distractibility in the classroom or people cheating in the classroom. And so it pushes them off of this device, you know, onto something that's, you know, maybe more noticeable. Um, I hear your concern though about maybe that's still a problem, maybe they're not really good at it or, or they're
My ear.
Yeah, like yes, read text, you know, but, but um,
Truly gonna be a problem.
But, but I, I do, I do think that the, the phone is a significant first step. I mean, it, it, it sounds like from the, from what we heard in the last meeting that the phones were the things that the teacher's really concerned about. I get that people can connect to their phones, um, and that maybe we'll get there, but I, I do think it's meaningful progress.
It, it's huge progress. I, I mean, because it's the, it's one, it's something we can, we have a really good shot at managing, because you can't pull a phone out and not be seen.
And do it with integrity.
Right, so, and I think, and I do believe that kids are gonna be going through a, we're gonna wean them off of some of this stuff too. And, you know, sitting here right now, we don't even, we don't, like I said, we don't know who has, currently has accommodations. We don't, we, we have students who are probably, they're accommodating themselves, right? And then what's that mean for the process of, of providing that accommodation? What, so I just, you know, I think the visibility of the phone and having, it's important for us to have success, right? Because if we're gonna do this, we're gonna do it with the intent of doing it fully and doing it so that it's, that we're, I mean, we're not gonna come to you with recommendations for one million dollars to implement this thing so that we can implement it, right? We're gonna, our intent is to provide a plan that allows us to implement. And I think this is critical point right now for us to just really understand what that, what that means and what do we really need to do. I, I, I know there's a thousand things we're not even thinking of that we're gonna run into.
Well, one thing
Also learn about them over this time.
Yeah, and um, contact with parents or parents contacting students. So as part of this policy, before we go on, can I make a friendly suggestion? Is this a friendly amendment to my amendment or just a suggestion?
I have it written right here.
Would it be, I'm at, I'm looking at the two of you. Would it be acceptable to make the recommendation to parents as part of this policy? That it's, it's best right now for watches and other devices that could be connected to a cellphone to be left at home as well? If, if, um,
Sure.
Like, could we, can we recommend it at this time so that parents hear the message that, you know, we're trying to reduce devices and distractions in the classroom? And that if, um, if we find students are using it to interact with their phone, students will be asked to leave those at home as well.
Could I, could I make a request?
Yeah.
Because there are four administrators for fourteen hundred and plus students and two hundred plus staff members, and there's just so much time in the day. And our messaging will be very confusing even with the best intent. Because I have my back to school letter ready to go, four pages long, sorry, that's what it is. I have an email about cellphones ready to go, it's page long.
Yeah.
I have an email about vape detectors ready to go, also a page long. We have like a normal expectations, like we have so much. I'm asking that some of this has to come from the school committee's messaging, because we'll, we're gonna message so much that much of our message, which is rarely read or listened to anyway, will be, will be buried.
Thank you for the email coming from Frank.
Well, it's a K through twelve issue, right? That's absolutely, absolutely.
The parent, they're blessed. I, I, I agree.
I mean, I'll take, you know, genocide, you're gonna work with your, your crew to figure out, you know, what the communication, what's the clearest communication we can provide right now.
I have a one pager with links to the handbook for, for cellphones. And it covers, it covers what Dr. H, Dr. Hackett's amendments. Um, basically, the vision is kids walk into class, you put your cellphone in the shoe tree, that's it. Can't use it at all unless the teacher has asked for pre-approval to use it as a learning device, which means they've planned on it and it's a controlled environment. Then they get them for passing time and lunch and that's it. Um, then if, if, if parents want to have contact, it, it, it makes an amendment for students with medical need, requires uninterrupted cell access, must submit a written request from a board certified medical professional. It states there are no other options for students to have access but their cellphone for medical reasons. As a type one diabetic, I can tell you like, I use my phone, I don't need my phone. There are, there are devices that the, the, that Big Pharma would be happy to give you, give you air quotes. Um, and then
We might need to make some modifications to what you described.
Sure.
Yeah.
Parents and caregivers should not expect the instant contact communication will occur if they reach out to their student while the student is in class. Students may respond during passing time or lunch only. We give the, the link to our block schedule, which we give several other times and several places. Please contact WHS main office with the phone number for any emergency, all cap, issues. That's, that, I mean, I think that's the place to start.
Yeah.
With all this.
Students are gonna be in this building in nine days.
Nine days. So, and we'll, we will message it. So the first day of school is regular day one, day two, I meet with the seniors and the freshmen, day three, I meet with the freshmen, the sophomores and the juniors. And we will verbally tell them all this. We already met with the incoming ninth graders yesterday in a very successful uh, first major orientation day.
Like fifty percent of this.
Yeah, well, over, that would be like two hundred, two hundred plus kids. Um, where we, where we made sure that they knew that, it, don't get used to having your cellphone around.
Yeah.
But it's a lot of messages and a lot of information and I'm concerned that people will just be drinking from the fire hose of information.
Yeah, no.
And, and be like, I didn't get the message, well, we sent it out.
Right.
You know, it's, there's too much, there's too many messages.
I know, yeah.
I think that makes sense. I, I, you were maybe, not to get into this detail in case this wasn't the thing, um, the, the no other way. Just medical necessity, I think is good because it maybe less than the way that the family's plan has decided to do it, even if there is a third party or a vendor or someone else. But that's the only equipment I have with it. But, but I like your distinction of, you know, it's, it's not just a casual, like, I could look at it, but it's, it's part of a plan that I've made with my healthcare provider.
So, I'll just say we're at five twenty-two. We are still on the first item in our report, and we have several other items. And Chris is be going into an executive session, I think, at five, in eight minutes.
Prior to five thirty.
Yeah, I guess prior to five thirty, that's right.
I would make a motion.
And we have a motion at the table. Um, so are we ready to, but all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, opposed.
And um, I think that we should use our book lockers because I'm okay with the kids not reaching in between class. I'm okay with them not checking their buttons often if they are.
And that may be the solution.
But that'll also help them achieve the culture shift that we need to get to belt spell. It's okay if you don't check your device after two hours. It can wait, because what you're doing in the building with your peers is more important.
All right, thank you very much. Um, our vote is forward one. Um, and majority carries. Um, so with that, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Mahoney.
George, my, my goal is to have the handbook updated tomorrow and send out the welcome to staff on Monday and then welcome for students and families on Tuesday. Okay, good luck.
Let's go on the record.
Happy, happy last days.
Yeah.
These days.
Right.
Should I?
Carriage house liaison.
Can we say one, I, I, I'm realizing this is here.
I'm sorry, um, we had, or we have, sorry, there you go. We have decided to table, uh, picking up um, consideration of splash pad at this meeting, so.
Notice what they did.
But you learn a lot about cellphones.
Alright, sorry. I didn't, we didn't know you were coming back either, so.
Sorry.
Yeah. But anyways, it's all good. I, I'm happy to have, especially with it at any time, you gave me it twice now. Some impaired things, I like the dog milk, well, that, so hopefully we can get there someday. We're getting in the school year and then we're not gonna have time to do it again. I'd like that, I'd like to get it going.
Thank you, I'm sorry about that.
Your glasses.
Yeah, I know.
Um, let's see, carriage house liaison update, um, Dr. Matthews had gone, she had represented us at the historical commission and then I had listened in for its select board, so.
Um, so, I will very quickly in the interest of time, um, so I, since our last meeting, um, an application has been filed um, by the chair on behalf of the committee um, to apply for a demolition permit um, for the carriage house, um, based on our prior five to zero vote.
Um, July twenty first.
Yes, so pursuant to that, the historical committee, uh, commission convened, convened a hearing, uh, a public hearing um, on the matter of whether the carriage house was subject to a demolition delay because it's historic nature.
Right, August twelfth.
Um, and they voted unanimously that it was subject to um, that demolition delay as we expected and actually put into the text of our motion. Um, they also voted unanimously to send us a letter that they believe that we are not the appropriate body to apply for a demolition permit based on, um, so that in, in opposition to the advice that we've received from, from town council, that school committee does have care and control of the building and therefore is the appropriate um, uh, applicant for the demolition permit. Um, they are of the opinion that there's still a question about that. And they discussed at their table whether it was appropriate for them to hire independent counsel representing the historical commission to contest the finding of town council that we are the appropriate um, committee to be making the application for a demolition permit.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, you may.
Um, did, um, did you perhaps ask them how, um, why their opinion has changed that we're not the care, custody and control since they supported the renovation of the carriage house when school committee brought that to town meeting? So their precedent is that they supported our care, custody and control when we brought the renovation warrant to town meeting.
Yeah, did you ask that?
I'd ignore that.
Just out of curiosity. Yeah, but their, their members didn't vote accordingly.
They, they did to support the renovation of the carriage house by the school committee. So they voted that we had care, custody and control when we were renovating it. But now that we want to tear it down, they say we don't have care.
I'm sure their position would be, they just didn't, they didn't need to do the due diligence, or something else, you know, along the lines of what they were doing. I'm sure that would be their position.
Point noted. Um, as I said, I'm just here to
I was just curious.
Yeah.
I wasn't there, I was just genuinely curious.
Also impressed with you, Tim. You did a great job representing the school committee. And they said it was him against the world, yeah?
Yeah, I would say
Thank you for supporting the safety of our students because that is our primary concern when it comes to the carriage.
I said it was my role in the meeting to represent the committee's will not to be there as an individual member expressing my own opinions about it. However, uh, I would say that both members of the historical commission as well as members of the public, there was no public comment period, it was just sort of free rein discussion with sort of light to no moderation by the chair, and so a lot of people were just chiming in. Um, Chair Bruce. Um, but there was a substantial interest from the community, both from community members as well as from the historical society. Um, who I will just summarize very briefly, there were four major points that were raised. One of them was that we, um, we did not a- adequately or accurately inform the historical society of what was going on and that therefore they were very frustrated with us because they felt like we hadn't engaged in appropriate levels of communication with them. And that perhaps that would impair the relationship with the Ambrose School because they feel like they don't, they felt like we should have spoken to them more proactively and more clearly about what we were asking to do, and so they were blindsided by it. Um, the second thing that was raised as a concern was the stuff around who the appropriate um, person to actually put the, the permit together was. The third major concern that was raised was that the school committee has failed to bring an alternative plan to town meeting that could pass since the failure of the twenty twenty-two administrative office plan for the carriage house. And it was, you know, that, it wasn't that people were voting against that plan. They were of the opinion that a large majority of Winchester supports saving the building, we just didn't bring the correct plan. And they're disappointed that we haven't brought an alternative plan that could pass and get funded since then. And the fourth thing was, and this is the most important one, and the one that I think, you know, we need to consider potentially is they feel, you know, despite the fact that this happened before select board had its meeting um, on Monday night of this week, they felt like um, it was not appropriate for um, us to go towards demolition of the building without giving care and control back to the select board so that the select board could successfully solicit better proposals for the salvation of the building. And so they feel like we are doing something really sinister by holding on to care and control of the building and not immediately handing that back to the select board now. So the select board can save it.
Right.
From demolitions.
So at select board on Monday night, the select board had, or Capitol Planning representative
Brian, Brian Manalia.
Yeah.
Came and posed question to the select board on whether they would help, whether they would sponsor, co-sponsor, agreed co-sponsor a, um, an article um, with Capitol and also potentially with the school committee um, on um, demolishing the ca, the, the carriage house.
For the three hundred thousand for, for springtime meeting.
That came later. Um, and select board voted unanimously um, to co-sponsor demolishing an, an article to demolish the carriage house. Um, and then they also uh, made a motion which passed unanimously to communicate with the historical commission. Um, that school committee, that town council had
Right.
That town council had deemed that school committee was the appropriate owner, um, property owner and the appropriate entity to submit um, the demolition delay or the demolition application. Um, and that they would write a, an, a note on, and, or a formal communication to the historical commission stating.
Memorializing the union of, of town council.
And their support of that.
So I spoke to Bruce and Sean McCarthy.
Yeah.
Just before I left and just before the meeting that we will end it.
In the airport on my back?
No.
Okay.
Um, uh, they've not mentioned that conversation because I spoke to them about our reasons for
Right, and I, I, I also had to make the point because it was stated by members of the historical commission that no one from school committee had ever reached out to them and they were blindsided. And I know for a fact, um, Karen and you have all spoken to them, so I said I didn't really know where that was coming from because that was not consistent with, you know, obviously I have no firsthand knowledge of those conversations. But I said I trust my colleagues to have these conversations with you, and so I was a little lost.
I was gonna say, and I think Tom and I raised it in the first meeting.
Yeah, you guys, yeah, right, back in June.
Right, and Tom agreed to.
I, I was curious with your conversations, did, did, did you talk with them about the fact that we would very much like to preserve the building?
Absolutely.
That we couldn't find a viable way to do it.
And we're hoping that a motivated individual will come out now during the demolition delay. And we're hoping that it would stimulate a conversation.
We're trying to bring some of this to town meeting and have a year-long, you know, community conversation about, you know, acceptable uses that could happen in proximity to his school.
Okay.
Um, but, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, that is how the
See, I was gonna say, as to the last point, not this particular committee, but this committee in the past has discussed alternative uses of that building.
Correct.
And consistently, the messaging from the administrative staff has been that there is limited use for the community for that building because it sits so close to the Ambrose School. And the limited amount of parking that is also available um, to anybody who would be using that facility. So the ability for it to be used by many things that you could imagine wouldn't be able to be used eight to four, Monday through Friday, at least a hundred ninety days.
Absolutely. Right now, there are four hundred students that go into the Ambrose building every day during school year, zero parking spots.
It was even a concern when we put admin, when we talked about putting administration.
Oh, yeah, I don't know how, how you would do it.
Yeah.
You'd have to park on like
There, just, I, that point was discussed.
Okay.
Um, I would say that they're, at least not there, I shouldn't, there were perspectives expressed in the room that that was a false assertion, that there were ways to solve that problem and have a multiplicity of other uses that we may not have considered appropriately.
And they suggest them?
Yes, so one of Yes, so one of them was, um, so, um, Ms. McCarthy suggested that we find a high net worth artist. Who was willing to take on the cost of renovating the building themselves. Um, and would only take up one parking spot, um, affordable housing came up, um, that it should be turned into between three and five affordable housing units. Um, and also.
That would fall under the safety issue.
Uh, well, they, again, they believe that that's correct.
Right.
Why they're hoping, I believe, potentially to have outside legal counsel representing them because they believe.
Right.
So that there's a, I, I would characterize it as. What I said in the middle of the meeting is that I sensed that there was a lot of anger and frustration by certain. Community members and, and sort of collections of community members, um, that I was somewhat. Taken off guard by because it felt like it was a mixture of, um, things that were said that were not accurate. So things like we hadn't communicated with the historical mission and they were blindsided by it. Um, where I think, you know, I, I, I do take on board the historical society's criticism, you know, I think. We maybe could have done a better job there in terms of communicating in advance because I, I do feel like they really did feel like they were blindsided. But some of it felt sort of not terribly based in what I know to be facts that have been shared. With me, and so I, you know, I mean, I think the select word. Was very clear about the fact that select word accepts the town council's opinion on. Who the Karen control entity currently is, um, and that there's, that's not an issue that. I think they would provide funding for an outside legal counsel to review because we.
Right.
Pay our town council quite substantial amounts of money, I mean.
I, I, I can't squeak for select, but I've spoken to majority of select members.
Right.
They support.
No, they were very clear on. They were very clear.
The, the problem with handing it to select to make the same exact decision that we just made is that it delays that, and it's again.
Well, I mean, I think there's a discussion, I mean, there is a discussion as to whether the application, eh, on some level, right, we are the ten. Right? There are different statutory responsibilities of school committees versus select boards, but at the end of the day. We are all elected bodies of the town of Winchester, right? So is it really necessary for another, even if it were determined that town council's determinations in Barat?
Right.
Would it even be necessary when the town of Winchester has applied for this? Would it really even be necessary to do a second application? Could select we're just ratifying, say, we also support. Right, so it's, but regardless, that's in my mind, the crux of the issue is that there is a significant, I think, um, as alluded to. There, there are folks who are upset about the loss of a historic structure and that I think we all felt that, right? Um, and, and, you know, if there were an option to replace it, renovate it, you know. Not replace it, but, but make something out of the current structure, I think we would be fully supportive of it, it just needs to be able to actually be funded.
Yeah.
Be within five hundred feet of the school building.
Yeah, I, yeah, I think those are the, the two things, it's, uh, it's a big political will question, um, you know. The, the town chose not to fund it for, for central office, which is one acceptable use. Could be used for, you know, additional Ambrose classrooms, if you connect it to something, you know, I'm sure that, that that wouldn't have a problem with it, you know, school use. Or it could be used for, as a town asset for, you know, off hours, you know, as an adjunct to the Sanborn House for weddings. Or other things that may occur when the school isn't in use. And there might be other purposes, other uses of the building that we haven't thought of, but those are three categories I feel like we've touched around. Um, and so it's, it's really, you know, someone if you're listening, you know, we, we, we would, we would like to save this.
Very specific purposes.
But there are some, there are, are some, you know, restrictions around purpose, but we're not even there because there's, there's no suggestion that you get funded yet. Um, and so, you know, you know, there are people who have money, people who have foundations, you know, people who can run campaigns, you know. You know, run it for one of those three purposes or, or let's talk about other purposes.
And I, but I, you know, I think from my own, I'm not speaking as a representative of the committee that went to historical commission. But if from my own perspective, I think the biggest challenge of all of this is we're currently dealing with a massive gap in terms of our capital needs, right? So is this actually based on the full portfolio of all of our capital needs that we need to fund with public money? Right, is this actually something that rises to the top that would get funded? I mean, we, the capital planning, I mean, that was Brian's, you know, the chair of, of planning boards and vice chair of capital plannings. That was his presentation to select board on Monday was this is, would the prioritization as it's being voted. You know, I mean, they did not, once again, and you made the point, they did not once again prioritize the flatwork at Lincoln, right? And, and that is something that we've been dancing around for longer than I've been on this committee, right? And I still did not make the, as we discussed and anticipated, it still didn't make the list, right? But like, if you were then to say, okay, let's take that as one example, do we let Lincoln, the entry to Lincoln continue to deteriorate? Or do we save the carriage house? If we put those two things in opposition, like what's the answer to that? I personally would vote for our active school building that actually houses a fifth of our elementary students, right, like.
Alternatively too, since we had, we were looking at three hundred thousand dollars to demolish it or five hundred thousand to, to fix the envelope. If someone came in with a proposal and said, you know, we will fund all but a quarter of a million of it. Um, that would actually be a savings from our three hundred thousand to drop down to two fifty. So, you know, maybe there's a creative thing that could happen that would help save money for our, our use elsewhere. Um, because we're looking at spending a lot of money to, to demolish that building. Unless your friend comes with a.
So anyways, in the interest of time, that's kind of the update, I, I don't think that. I, I initially had thought when we were sort of discussing putting this on the agenda, that we would need to potentially consider taking a vote, um, on. Giving Karen control to the select board, based on their deliberation and vote on Monday night, I no longer think that's necessary to even. Consider at this point, we can revisit that should there be a different determination by town council. But as of how things stand right now, they kind of broadly confirm that it is correct for. The chair and our director of facilities to have signed the demolition permit and so.
So it has been signed, has it been, is it in effect?
The, the demolition delay is in effect.
Yeah, so as of what, July fifteenth?
Whatever the date of the.
The, the demolition application was, I signed it on the twenty first. So I believe you.
It's standard that day.
So the twenty first of July.
The twenty first, so, and then next year.
So you can't, we could not tear it down until the twenty first of July.
August year.
July twenty second.
August.
July twenty second.
And I want to say, they did actually put a number of conditions on the demolition delay. And so, you know, to, for Dr. Hackett and Mr. Marin, it's important because they, they were very clear about. You know, a- as an example, they want a hundred percent security of the site. And during the one year demo, so there were. You, you have to look at the way they wrote the conditions, right? It's, we're gonna have to look at the conditions of, because they, they made it very clear when they did it. That there were things that they expected us to do and they would come after us if we didn't fulfill those obligations, so.
Can I ask if they have, speaking of authority, the authority to put those kind of, my understanding of demolition delay by law doesn't allow for. Those kind of conditions.
Right, there were a number of conditions in the order.
I would be curious to know if it is legal for them to put those kind of conditions.
There does.
The other thing that was confusing about it is I only received that second hand as a forward from, I, my understanding is it hasn't actually been sent to any of the responsible parties. At the school department, which is another interesting. I know it's gone to select board, but I, I don't believe it's actually come to Mr.
Review, town council review of the conditions that they put on. Fall within the legal requirements of the demolition delay by law. Because I do also remember that, um, when we've talked about this in the past, one of the conditions of the demolition delay by law. Is if, um, it is ruled by the building commissioner or the fire chief. That the building is a danger to the current property or, um, to the residents around it. The demolition delay by law doesn't apply.
Well, I was gonna say, so, I mean, that is a real condition.
I, I will say though, that, that protecting the, the building, I don't exactly know what their condition says, and certainly if they don't give us notice of the condition, I don't know that it counts. But, but we ought to protect it, be, if we're concerned about people getting hurt there, and the spirit of our conversation when we voted. Was we wanted to buy ti- time for the town to be able to figure out if there was a way to save it, so. You know, even if, if it was deemed dangerous, we should figure out how to protect it more so people don't get in there rather than trying to tear it down.
Unreasonable conditions, Mr. Hopcroft, then, like a hundred percent protection would be a challenge.
And, and they haven't even told us that.
Right.
You know, so like until they tell us something, we can't really react to it.
Right.
So I will, I, I actually would request that one of you reach out to. Whomever would be, I, I don't know how these things work from a legal perspective, but if we haven't been notified, then that's also a challenge because. There's been no.
I would say we don't reach out until one other, okay.
Okay. Um, but I share your, I share your, if somebody wants to give us eight million dollars, I would love our administration to have a lovely central office there.
So next up on our agenda is school committee articles for the fall town meeting warrant, um, and. Um, so we have some, well, carriage house was one of the items. That the capital planning committee is looking for co-sponsors.
Right.
And they would like it to be a standalone article.
Right, and it, but, and as you were saying earlier, they're, I think you're looking towards spring.
Correct, so the last capital planning meeting, which was last Wednesday, which I dialed in some. Kind of, um, they wanted to have it as a standalone article with select. And they received select support on Monday, and they are hoping to get school committee support. Um, and they want to do it in, in the spring, and I agreed with this because it would give time for individuals to come forward. With the demolition delay, so come the spring, individuals can come forward, we can have discussions around that if that should happen. Um, and so they're looking for sponsorship, so should we make a motion? Is this, it's for springtown meeting, but why not get ahead of the game?
I, um, select board was happy to do that, yes.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to support the capital committee's. Um, spring town meeting article for the three hundred thousand dollars for the demolition of the Sanborn House.
It's on recording, so.
A monetary amount on it and.
That was what, um, the amount. That is the three hundred thousand that we voted for capital and, um.
My understanding from the historical commission is that's the current estimate based on their due diligence around costs.
Right, for springtown meeting, not fall.
I, I, I would be happy to second that unless you have more.
Any discussion or all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right, and with that, the vote is unanimous, um, and the school committee will support co-sponsoring. The standalone article for springtown meeting for the demolition of.
And, and I just want to state again, you know, I, I voted in favor of that because it's consistent with our prior vote, um, but. Our prior conversation was that, that this is a last resort, it's the least expensive way.
Yes.
If, and we encourage people to come forward and do whatever they can, we've tried, um, and don't have a.
Yeah, that's why it's spring time meeting, hoping that we're gonna have enough time.
Yeah. Doesn't get turned down, but.
Would be a good use of the energy that seems to be expended right now on, on, um, of the criticism of. School committee.
Yeah, I mean, I would really.
That around into a positive, let's get a campaign going to do something.
Yeah.
I, I would love to see that, I, I, I was for my own sake, I mean, I was disappointed. At the center of the discussion because it really felt like it could have been a collaborative, like.
Motivate people to renovate.
You know, and I, I would really rather have collaborative energy of problem solving. You know, it may or may not come together, right, because it is a big money look. And it does primarily, I believe, have to be from outside if it's gonna work, because I just don't see the prospect for funding it publicly right now. But it would be great if we could at least investigate whether it's an option before we go to the last resort, so.
Yeah.
It's my plea to people out there who might have funds. Alright.
Um, well, I think it's consistent to say the whole committee supports.
Yeah, no, I think that's what I said was, you know, there was no sentiment on the committee, rah rah, let's go, you know, wreck a historic structure. Like, I think it's when something sits for twenty years. In, you know, broadly speaking, in a state, you know, I mean, the, this discussion's been happening for.
Twenty years.
Yes.
And it's, condition is not getting better.
And other people have come forward with plans before that have also not come to fruition and been unfunded, so. I, I completely agree with you, Tim, that, the plea to save the carriage house, to find somebody a benefactor. Because I, I completely also agree that the town just doesn't have the capital funding, not only to rebuild that. Or to maintain it even, once it's, has been rebuilt, so.
I'd just add to the plea that if there's someone who has a viable path but needs more time, and they could put up a half a million to secure the perimeter of it. They could do that to buy themselves more time.
As it's viable and.
Yeah, that was the discussion before, was that, that, that if, if the envelope had been cheaper, I'm sure we would have voted that way. But it was two hundred thousand more and we are limited on funds.
And we still have.
And we need an angle.
Right.
Yeah, but I mean, I don't think we would be the ones to recommend a wedding venue. Public schools.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, so we still have some other articles that we would like to consider for fall town meeting. And one of them had come up at the policy subcommittee meeting, um, from the other night, and I think we've also talked about it a little bit in our workshops. Um, around, um, Dr. Hackett, you can take this over whenever you would like, but, and Dr. Hackett was talking about. Um, having a professional study, professional, um, GIS study done of our populations. Of our population and our, um, district boundaries, um, in order to, um, for us. To make a better decision around policy JC, um, which is assignment students to schools.
Well, sadly. Not in, not just, yeah, assignments of, of schools, but also obviously. We're opening Lynch, um, and we are, um, we're talking about Morocco and future Morocco. So we, it would be very helpful for us to really understand where our students are, um, we're also. We're doing transportation, we have a transportation route now for next year, are there more efficient ways to have the transportation routes? Do we, um, you know, do we need to think about redistricting anywhere? Uh, master facilities plan is coming up, I think it would be, uh, it would be helpful, it'd be very good information, I think, and it would be, um. I, I think that not just for the school department, I think for the town too, so. I think it makes sense, yeah, if, if, to look, if we're looking at the facilities for educational program to know where the people are and how those two things go together. So I think it's important.
Yeah.
Well, having said all that, there could, I don't, not aware, but there could be the talent in town to do that too. I mean, I believe that when the redistricting discussion was happening last time around, um, that there were. There's, there were people in town who actually have, have that expertise, so, um, if, if we. I don't, I don't have the names, but.
But I will also say that, should we, because there has been discussion about, um. The total portfolio of our educational facilities that we currently control, right? And strictly speaking, what town meeting authorized under the purview of EFPBC is. Just to look at the facilities themselves. Um, what I think is missing from that, if we really are, you know, sort of thinking about the next twelve to. However, many months, one year to many years. Um, it's also a policy of this committee that if we are thinking about making changes to our portfolio of educational facilities, we also need to study that. Um, and so in terms of actually, like, I, I think that having money, um, allocated for the purpose of both. Really crisply understanding where in the district our students are located and, and where we're likely to need seats. And how that maps onto all nine of the current buildings that we currently have care and control of. Not including other pieces of property, but the nine current educational facilities that we have care and control of, I think that's another part of this. So while I think there is a potential that we could save some money by doing it at less or zero cost. I think there's also, in this fiscal year, a very likely need that we'll need to do some study of that as well. So it feels like regardless of the situation, we're gonna need some amount of money.
I understood that to be part of this.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to be clear that like, I think in the past, we've sort of relied on the beneficence of people in the community potentially to do these things at. Little to no cost, I think we are not in a position, given the budget realities of this year and how tightly things are gonna be managed because of. The current rates of inflation, I don't think we're in a position to just find the amount of money that we would potentially need.
Well, and that was also for the very specific purpose of redistricting, right? To your point, this is bigger than that.
Correct.
Right, so, um, so.
I think it's both that as well as another component of it, which is.
We can bring you a proposal of the, on the eleventh, um.
We can bring you a proposal of the on the eleventh um.
And certainly, like anything else, if we have someone in the community who has the expertise and skills and is willing to do it at a reduced cost for us, I'm happy to use the skills and talents of.
Correct.
Members of our community who have that background, but I, which as I thought what Dr. Hackett was suggesting.
No, I just wanted to be clear.
Yeah.
Aren't fall town meeting articles due on the first?
No, September nineteen.
Number nineteen.
Oh, September nineteenth.
The reason why I think it was important to discuss it today is so that when the recommendation comes on September eleventh, it's not a surprise because we really do have to be ready to go within eight days of that.
Right, yep.
Committee meeting, so, but yes, I think it's sort of up to amount, acts whatever you find in their research.
Yeah.
Great.
I call that low bone, I was like.
Yeah.
Um, all right, so we'll take that up on September eleven, okay? And another item that I have on my list is, I think we're talking about um the Vinge School. Um, is it?
A custodian.
And one more.
Yeah, so I mean, you know more about that than I.
The select board has already discussed this, they discussed it on Monday night. Um they're fully supportive of um the addition of an additional one point zero FTE custodian for Lynch. Um I think it's been very clear from the current staff there that that is absolutely going to be required to maintain the new and improved facility. Um I think select board very clearly on Monday night asked if we would be willing to co-sponsor and you know, we can certainly discuss this, but I would like to make a motion that we also support by co-sponsoring the article at Bell Town Meeting to add another one point zero FTE custodian at Lynch to adequately maintain.
Second. Yeah, I thought they already added it.
They did not, I'm in favor.
Aye.
Aye, all right, that's five to zero. Great, so.
Then I would also support two FTEs.
Well, I mean, I think this is.
Oh, it's two and it's also another position that just to understand. I mean, it's the Chris Conway phenomenon here, like, these are complicated systems and complicated buildings, and I don't know whether Chris has the capacity to you know, Lynch was pretty easy to run because it was just a matter of, you know, pipe bursting and I mean, it wasn't, you know, so. Because you have a level of expertise, you know.
You just run on your smartphone now.
Yes, well, yeah, because if we're gonna ban smartphones, then.
We're including the staff in this? I didn't realize.
Oh, okay, I didn't know.
Wow, okay. I'm all for it.
Moving it forward.
Your phone too.
Not messing.
They're gonna be like, kids, kids, put your phones in here while I'm.
Please, please.
Um, that's great.
Do we have any other articles that?
There might be, I think.
That's, that's what I.
That's what we've got so far.
Going back to our article for the spring, do you want to write, should I inform capital? Is that my role as your liaison or the usually something that's there? Let me do a co-sponsorship of an article.
You can let them know.
Yeah, okay, happy to do it. Just wanted to know, what's proper protocol?
Great.
No, 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 happy to do it.
So that's what we got. I anticipate we may have more, but that's where we're at.
That's where we are at the moment. So, okay, um, let's see, splash pad, we have tabled. Um next, we have consideration of first reading of the facilities, or we have a first reading of of facilities rental policies and manual, and um this is for policies KF and KFR. Um Mr. Marin has been patiently and diligently put together a revision of those articles and has also developed a policy manual um on rental, policies and procedures. Um and he has also put together a study of uh local communities um building rental fees. And he's also put together a study of energy, energy fees, so.
So in the interest of.
Yeah, I would, yeah, go ahead.
I mean, I, I I will say as a member of the policy subcommittee, that Mr. Marin's work was extraordinary and incredibly detailed.
It was very.
Um and so unless anybody has a need to dive deeply into this, um I would be happy to, I mean, just say that please, between now and when we actually vote on it next time, read it, ask any questions, but we did not have any major concerns and voted two to zero to forward it to you for consideration.
And I believe we've already gotten some feedback.
I was gonna, and for those of us that have been with Mr. Marin a while, this is something he's been working on for some time and is consistent with that work.
Yeah, so while we're not voting today, I just, I mean, unless Andrew, you find this to be really rude, I would be happy to just leave it at that, ask Andrew your questions. I will say, I was highly impressed with the work. It's incredibly detailed and we should be in good shape to vote at our next meeting. Maybe even on the consent agenda.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
I agree.
Um, and we already voted for backpacking.
We did, yeah.
Um so our next meetings are Sep- September eleven.
And we now have adopted new ones, so we have our cadence back on the second and fourth Thursdays.
That's right, so I can, I'm happy to make the motion to move to executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. As the chair declares that in open meeting, they have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the committee and the committee will adjourn directly from executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.